Well, good evening, everyone. We'd like to call our Thursday, January 26th Fayetteville City Council meeting in order. Welcome all of you all who are joining us in person, and the audience, and those who are joining us remotely. At this time, if we could please stand for the invocation, ask that Pastor Keith Smith of the Faith Community Church, if he would, come lead us in prayer. Pastor, how are you?
Good. How are you, sir?
Good. Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members, thank you for this privilege of offering tonight's invocation. May we bow our heads in prayer, please. Our Father in Heaven, we thank you for this opportunity to come before you tonight in prayer. We ask for your guidance and leadership in this meeting. I pray for clarity of purpose and that we find favor in your sight. Lord, I also pray for all city employees, especially for those who put their lives in danger for us in this city every day. We ask for discernment and wisdom for our new police chief, Braden. We ask for your continued blessings of our city and its citizens in 2023. Grant us wisdom, grant us courage, that your will be done for the good of the people and for your glory, in the name of the one who saves us forever. Amen. The United States of America, and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor, thank you so much for the prayer. I'd like to spend a moment, just tell us about yourself or your ministry.
Just recently been ordained. The Lord has called me several years ago to teach Sunday School and be a deacon, and also a member of the Giddings, who give out Bibles to a lot of folks, and just consider it an honor to serve the Lord. And we have a small church in Massey Hill, and we call ourselves a friendliest church in town. We're not very big, but we're big in purpose to spread God's word.
Well, thank you so much. That's the only size that matters. But thank you for what you do. Thank you for joining us tonight.
Thank you very much.
Counselors, we move to item 4.0, announcements and recognitions. Any announcements, recognitions? All right, moving to 5.0, Mr. Manager. Okay. The only announcement I think we had, I thought I saw something about a birthday coming up at some point in time, but... Yeah. So I'm sure it was a misprint, Ms. Pam, so... But I think the city manager, he wants to make his birthday a national holiday, but we wish you a happy birthday in advance, but I'm sure we'll talk about this several more times.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
All right. Item 6.0, the approval of the agenda, counsel. Can we have a motion? Let's try the "I pass" tonight. Let's see how things move. It's not gonna work. Okay. All right. So motion to approve? Is a motion by Councilmember Hondros to approve? Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Thompson. Any discussion on the motion? All right, counsel, I'll look to you for your votes. Show of hands to approve the agenda. All right. Madam Clerk, that's unanimous by those present. Item 7.0 is consent. Councilmember Dawkins...
Thank you.
Mayor Protem Dawkins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda and pull item number 7.019 for discussion.
Second.
All right. There's a motion by Mayor Protem to approve the agenda, with the exception of 7.019, seconded by Councilmember Ingram. Any discussion on the motion? All right, counsel, I'll look to you for your votes. Those in favor? All right. Madam Clerk, that's unanimous. Motion carries. Item 7.09...
7.019.
7.019. Mayor Protem, any further discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Some of the council members requested that this item be pulled and for discussion. I support the request for legal representation of city employees, and so I'll go ahead and make the motion.
I'll circle back to you for your motion. I think we did have a couple of comments, questions, but I'll notate that. Madam Clerk, with this item, I know we... I mean, Madam, Ms. McDonnell, Attorney McDonnell, know, you know, we have certain boundaries that we have to abide by from the employee privacy restraints, but as legal services are requested for this particular issue, what are the criteria in which the city typically pays for representation, legal representation?
Under state statute and city ordinance, an employee who... or employees who are sued as a result of actions that occur in the course and scope of their position may request that the council approve the payment of their legal fees.
Okay. And, of course, with the attachment, it had the two... or the officer's name, so it's a matter of public record there. On this particular situation, or not this specific situation, but in general, when there is an investigation pertaining to the actions of a police officer or employee, I guess that's conducted by the manager's office. In this particular case, has that been completed, or is it still in review?
As far as I know, that has been completed, but I have to defer to the city manager.
Yes, sir, it has. Okay. Are you able to share any components of outcomes?
I think the... We are not able to, under state statute, Personnel Privacy Act prohibits us from discussing the specifics, but as the manager said, and as you asked, investigation was conducted and appropriate action was taken.
Okay. Councilmember Benevente.
Beyond any sort of specific disciplinary that, under state statute, we cannot discuss, what are some changes to public policy as it relates to the way the police department operates have changed, if any? Or what are some things that we are doing as a result of this incident that can be looked at as accountability from the community, from the community's perspective?
We have changed our complaint process for people who file complaints against the police department, or when we initiate investigations on complaints. One is that, at the beginning now, we will send the person who is the... has made the complaint, send them a letter outlining for them exactly the timeframe for a decision, and if we're unable to make a... to investigate fully their complaint within the timeframe specified, then we will send them an additional letter telling them that it has been delayed. Number two, one of the concerns that the council and I had with the incident in question was that there was video that had been taken by the complainant that I was unaware of, police chief at the time was unaware of, and as a result, the council was also aware of the fact that this was something that could be coming forward. And so we've made changes to how complaints are logged, and how I am notified and the chief is notified. The third is that I proposed to the council that we would create an additional position in the manager's office, an assistant to the city manager for public safety, and we are finalizing the job description for that now, and hope to go to market with that position sometime in early February. But that position would be additional eyes and ears for me as it relates to all items related to public safety in the city, including fire, but primarily at the moment, police. As the council is aware, we have several items that we are tracking initiatives in the police department, and this would give me additional ability to provide oversight of those initiatives, particularly as they relate to the intersection of community engagement as well as accountability. So those are the three that we have instituted directly as it relates to this incident.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Ingram.
Thank you. Just so, for full understanding, these employees are still employees of the city of Fayetteville? Is that correct? Thank you.
Okay. Just from my recollection, did we approve one of these two? Because the CAM still has both. We delayed everything? Okay. All right. All right, counsel, any other questions, comments? Okay.
Ready to make a motion.
All right. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve the request for legal representation of the city employees in item number 7.019.
That's a motion by Mayor Protem, seconded by Councilmember Hondros. Any discussion on the motion to approve? Discussion, Councilmember Benevente.
Thank you, Mayor Colvin. I think it's important that our community understand this process that we're currently about to vote on. Certainly, there is a duty for the city to represent its employees in the due course of their scope of duty. Granted, there are times in the past where officers have engaged in conduct that did not end up receiving the recommendation of the city attorney or the city council for representation, and that's because it was determined that the actions they took were outside of the scope. For me, the actions taken by the officers were outside of the scope, and it's important that we don't simply pass this amount in the way that I feel has been in the past, where certain departments receive blank checks, very little scrutiny, and very little critique about how much ends up... It ends up costing the city and its citizens for a department to not have adequate checks and balances and accountability. As you heard, the city manager speak to some of these changes that are getting ready to be implemented. I think it's important that the community hold fast to all of those. As I like to say, it's not done until it's actually done. So we've got some encouraging moves that we're getting ready to make as it relates to accountability for law enforcement in the city, and I think it's high time that we start to have these conversations openly, not be afraid to let everyone know that there's room for improvement. Before I was on city council, it was important that I spoke before this body to ask for changes, and I was met at times from elected officials with comments like, "Those problems happen elsewhere. They don't happen here." And then, of course, they started to happen here, and I don't want to wait until we have more situations making national news before we start to make necessary changes. So you've heard some already from our city manager. Expect more to come when it comes to accountability over law enforcement here in Fayetteville, North Carolina.
Thank you, Councilmember Benevente. Councilmember Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City Attorney, can you clarify or just validate for those that are here and those in the audience? Was anything in this case done illegal or just a sense of bad judgment?
I don't think, Councilmember Thompson, it's appropriate for me to opine on that in open session, but I do think that, given the juncture, that it certainly is appropriate for the council to provide... to authorize legal representation of these two employees.
Thank you. So, did have a couple of questions. One, counsel, are we taking action on both of these together without separation? So, Madam Attorney, kind of to piggyback on Mr. Thompson's question about the legality of the actions. So, the criteria, I know you've given some examples before of times in which legal representation was denied for officers, and in those cases, without getting specific, I think the comment made was that they... there was... may have broken the law or something. What is the criteria for improvement? I know you've read the statute, but that definition kind of is open to interpretation. So is it possible that you can maybe not follow policy without necessarily breaking the law? You know, criminal charges and... Is that the barrier? Is that the determining factor whether criminal charges are filed?
That's not the... That is certainly one possibility, but what the statute speaks to is acting within the course and scope of their duties. And so certainly, if an officer or any employee were to be criminally charged, then it would be fairly clear that they were outside the course and scope of their duties. Does that answer your question?
Somewhat. So is it possible to operate outside the scope of your duties without being criminally charged? That's the question.
Yes, certainly. That's a possibility.
Okay. All right. Any other questions, comments? All right. So if motion on the floor by Mayor Protem Dawkins, seconded by Councilmember Hondros, discussion has taken place. Those in favor, or counsel, look to you for your "I pass" for your vote. Are you up on the iPad, Madam? All right. May I have to go show of hands? Those in favor of the Dawkins-Hondros motion? Show of hands. All right. Madam Clerk, that is those in favor, Councilmember Hondros, McNair, Jensen, Dawkins, Hare, and Thompson. Those opposed? All right. Motion carries six to four. All right. Moving forward to item 8.01. Mr. Harmon.
Actually, you have Dr. Newton this evening. I'm just his assistant at the moment.
Mayor, while Dr. Newton is getting settled, Dr. Newton, I think you... Has he already left? Got a new staff member? If you could introduce him as well. We're on the same page. There we go.
Good evening.
Good evening, Dr. Newton.
I asked you this upstairs, if you could hear me okay, because I'll just share that. I had COVID, and one of the things that... of the many things that have hit is now that I'm out of it and clear and can be around people, there's a handful of things that aren't working quite right. So this is very much appreciated, having this microphone. I want to, before you get into the actual hearing that you're going to have, a public hearing on, I want to share a little bit of information. You've seen the C-CAM, and in that, you may not recognize a name, and you... I would like to remind you of another one. So Heather Eckert, you saw her just a few weeks ago. Heather was involved in helping to put some of this together, as was Demetrius Mutos. And I don't know that any of you have had interactions with Demetrius, unless you were coming in on a zoning question before, but he is a recent hire and very recently moved into the field of planning. I didn't feel it appropriate for either of them to make this presentation, because this is information that's been gathered over a period of time. Alicia Moore, who used to be with the city as an attorney... Thank you. Or you can stand the whole time. It's up to you. Alicia Moore, who used to work for us as a senior planner, and David Nash, who used to work with us as a senior planner, had put some of this packet of the material that you have in front of you. So what you're going to be doing tonight is you'll hold a public hearing. I'm going to introduce this information, and Mayor, you'll do your normal thing on the public hearing, and I'll be happy to try to answer any questions that you may have in your discussion on it. So you see the item in front of you. Essentially, what we're working through are a series of changes to our regulations on how we handle what is currently called in our ordinance halfway homes. Essentially, there are four things that we're working through. You're going to see it in different versions as I go through this packet of material, but these are for things that are moving forward. This is not retroactive. This is not for something that happened in the past. This is should somebody come knocking and come to City Hall and want to make an application for this type of use. If these pass, these would be the regulations. It is not retroactive. Those are the four items that you see in front of you. So we currently have a definition. I'm not going to read it, but you can see the essence of that is it says halfway house. While the city council can come up with a different name, should you choose to do that, this seems to be a name that literature supports, a community reintegration center. And you'll see what's highlighted is this is for people who have been working through because of whatever they had done as a federal crime. They're down to the last few months, and it's either a condition of probation, the federal probation, or the way they're going through, that they are put into these types of things. We feel that's more appropriate, not to call it a house, but a reintegration center, which aligns with what actually is happening at the federal level and what they call... similar to what they call it. In order to make some changes, we had a work session with several of you who were on council. You came up with some ideas. We came up with some ideas. We did a legal review, a literature review, a peer review, and one of the big items that we can do is restrict the spots where these uses are located. What we currently have shows in that one column. You can see the list of zones. Rather than just limiting, we wanted to show it as a strike-through of what's being removed. The typical thing that happens is you have two zones. You have the office institutional and the limited commercial that typically are a buffer between a higher-density zone and residential. In this case, and in the case of what happened a few years ago, the office institutional was a location that was used. By removing that zone completely, it's no longer one that can be adjoining to a residential. Similarly, the LC, limited commercial, same idea. That's usually a transitory zone where it provides a distance between something more intense to the neighborhoods. Striking that out. We also have in our current regulations that our downtown can have this. That doesn't make sense, and remember, we pushed our boundaries, so the proposal is to take that out. One of the recommendations that came out when the work session happened here was that we also not just look at single-family, but how about multifamily? So the mixed residential that we can think of as multifamily and single-family, it has other uses too, and it usually is one where if somebody was looking, they could have identified. So the proposal is to remove that zone. We can't get rid of all the zones that can be here, but we can limit it, and we have the ability to do that. The current regulations that we have in place, anybody can come in for a special-use permit, and as a part of that permit, they can list their number of how many people they want to have there. What we're proposing... Give me just a second, please. Well, you can see it while I'm taking a second. What you see in front of you is we're saying, if somebody is proposing in one of those two zones to put in, whatever we call it, community reintegration center, and they are within a half-mile of one of the zoning districts that's single-family, they cannot have more than 30 that they would apply for before they actually submit for a special-use permit. If they happen to be within 500 feet of a multifamily, the one that I just showed you, they could go up to 40. In other words, we're putting much lower caps. These align very similar to what peer cities have done throughout in the city... in the state, I should say, where they have these in Greensboro, Wilmington, Greenville, This slide is part of, and I'm not going to spend much time on it, but the next two slides represent the spots where ordinance changes actually would have to be done. This first one says, "Well, if we're not putting in residential zones, we don't... we can modify those sections and not even have it in there." The next one says, "Here's all the tables." One of the things that came out when the work session happened on this before is making sure that the use table was real clear. That's in there. These others are the change of the definition and the term, what that looks like. You have in, as an attachment, and what I shared with you upstairs just a little bit ago in the presentation material, is this one sheeter that summarizes again what I've just gone through in the overview of this for you before you have your public hearing? Again, looking to change the definition, limit the zones, it still has to go through a special-use permit process, limit the number if they come in. The actual SUP process itself, that... There's a line missing on that. So you see where it says SUP process, current, old SUP standards, new, the Keenan standards. The city council, back in the fall, this council already approved those standards. Those are good standards that put a stronger burden on somebody coming in to show that what they're doing will not substantially injure the value of the adjoining land, and it's in harmony with the area in which it's located. You've already put those standards in, but I want you to understand the implication of that. A couple of years ago, those things were not in, old standards. We now have the new ones in place because you already acted on that back in the fall. And then we have another item that we're not changing that currently has a half-mile from other types of uses. One thing that's kind of important to recognize, this is not considered a disability. Other ones that we have, group homes, are typically connected to disabilities. Transitional housing is typically handled through social services at a county level, and we generally think of that as someone trying to get back into housing. So that separation would still be there as an extra measure that it can't be within a half-mile of anything. Those are the items that you have in front of you. You have a series of recommendations of what you can do. These are the standard ones. Obviously, it's coming to you because of the way that we've worked through it over a period of time, and we are suggesting, and the planning commission that took a look at this is recommending that first option, these amendments. Mayor, that is the presentation, and it's... I'm turning it back to you to run it for the public hearing, and I'll hang out right there.
Stay close by. All right. Thank you, Dr. Newton. Public hearing. Individuals desiring to speak at the public hearing must have signed up to speak with the city clerk by name and address before 7:00 PM this evening. 15 minutes will be allowed for each side of the issue at the public hearing. Individual speakers will be limited to three minutes each unless a previous arrangement has been made for a single spokesperson. When the city clerk calls your name, please come to the podium, clearly state your name and address for the record, and then begin to address the council. And the light changes from green to amber, or you're notified. You'll have 30 seconds remaining at the end of your allotted time. The time will sound, and you will be out of time. So at this time, I know Mr. Dr. Newton has given us the presentation, but Madam Clerk, you have any speakers?
No.
Other ones that we have, group homes, are typically connected to disabilities. Transitional housing is typically handled through social services at a county level, and we generally think of that as someone trying to get back into housing. So that separation would still be there as an extra measure that it can't be within a half mile of anything. Those are the items that you have in front of you. You have a series of recommendations of what you can do. These are the standard ones. Obviously, it's coming to you because of the way that we've worked through it over a period of time, and we are suggesting, and the planning commission that took a look at this is recommending that first option, these amendments. Mayor, that is the presentation, and it's, I'm turning it back to you to run it for the public hearing, and I'll hang out right there.
Stay close by. All right. Thank you, Dr. Newton. Public hearing, individuals desiring to speak at the public hearing must have signed up to speak with the city clerk by name and address before 7:00 PM this evening. Fifteen minutes will be allowed for each side of the issue at the public hearing. Individual speakers will be limited to three minutes each unless a previous arrangement has been made for a single spokesperson. When the city clerk calls your name, please come to the podium. Clearly state your name and address for the record. Then begin to address the council. And the light changes from green to amber, or you're notified. You'll have thirty seconds remaining at the end of your allotted time. The time will sound, and you will be out of time. So at this time, I know Mr. Dr. Newton has given us the presentation, but Madam Clerk, do you have any speakers?
No, sir, we have no speakers this evening.
So I will open and close the public hearing. Councilmember Ingram, you had a question?
Yes. Thank you, Dr. Newton. So I want to use a previous instance, which pretty much started this conversation. Based on what we saw with the proposed community reintegration center, would that still be allowed to go in that location?
What we're proposing tonight, no.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Now, just to clarify that, any action tonight is not pertaining to that situation. It was hypothetical that if this change passed, and if it existed then, that it would not have been an allowable use, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. It is not retroactive. And just to give you a little bit more on that, the reason that it wouldn't work, you can see that that zoning district's not there. The number of beds that they proposed was a hundred. We're saying even if you came into one of those, you're too close to the neighborhoods, you're too close to the multifamily, you wouldn't be able to go that high.
Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Benevente.
Dr. Newton, I know that in your presentation you talked about a literature review, a legal review, and also a peer review. Could you share with us who some of those peers were?
Yes. There's not a lot of these in the state. So we're able to look at Greensboro, where they have that they don't allow them in single family. They allow them in multifamily with an SUP. And they have a string separation of other uses of a half mile. We looked at Wilmington, where they have this, where they don't allow them in single family, where they do allow it with an SUP. And they also have a half mile, but that can be waived. Greenville, where they do not allow it in single family. They do allow in multifamily. They have a limit of twenty-five. I should have mentioned on the first one on Greensboro, they have a thirty in residential, if it's in residential, and forty in business. And then going back to where I was on Greenville, they do require an SUP if it's in residential, but not if it's in a business. Again, we're proposing, and everything has to go through an SUP. I'm going to pause and come back to that, and I'll come back to that after this. And then finally, we have Winston-Salem, where they have it called as a group care facility B. They do not allow it in single family. They do not allow it in multifamily. They have a limit of forty. And it never goes to the elected officials, it's handled by the planning board. And they have a separation from other things of twenty-five hundred feet. And our half mile is, well, the miles, the, what is it, fifty-two eighty? So half that, twenty-six forty, I think that's right. So we're a little bit more than that. What I didn't do a good job, I think, as I go back in my mind, I didn't do a real good job in telling you this, this one point connected to our standards that we have in place now, already in place with the SUP, put a strong burden on the person presenting this. And it was an administrative action that the council had done where we've notified, we've increased the notification requirement way past what we have to. We do a thousand feet around. So by the, there's a lot of people that could hear, would be notified because it would require special use permit hearing. And they have to show, they have the burden of showing it as, as the court appeals had, where they talked about not having a skin teller, even the smallest bit of information. That burden becomes a lot heavier based off of things you already have in place. And it maybe have been more to, more information than I should have when I answered than no when I answered your question.
One final question, Dr. Newton. Looking at the four changes, the feedback that I've gotten from the community revolve around the separation requirements, that half mile separation from similar uses. What sort of restrictions are in place with regards to just not group homes, not similarly situated, or similarly, similar used facilities, but just neighborhoods in general? Are they always sort of within a neighborhood?
No. It's a little, little tricky one to answer, but let me, let me do it in my fashion as it's running through my mind. The standard that we currently have says anything that comes in this list, whether it's therapeutic, whether it's a group home, whether it's a halfway house, they can't be closer than a half mile to each other. Because the group home industry
Yes.
in Fayetteville, about twenty years ago, started saying, we've got an awful lot of that. The city, and I don't remember, I don't know the date, I wasn't here, but I believe it was maybe about twenty years ago, put in a separation because they were all congregating in, and primarily in subdivisions and neighborhoods. That's regulated by the state. But what we were able to do, and communities across the state were able to do, is they were able to say, well, you can put a reasonable distance. And that reasonable distance that was worked out over a period of years was this half mile one. So whether it's therapeutic, or a group home, small or large, halfway house, they can never be closer than a half mile from each other. So that's why it's there, we're not proposing to change that. That's just an additional thing that would add to the half mile, to the five hundred foot, and to the limit on beds.
So, Dr. Newton, I did have a couple of questions. So I, I do agree with the distance part of this. But the questions I have, right here shows what the criteria's are for up to thirty. And then there's another bullet point that addresses up to forty.
Yep.
With the passage of this, would that mean that no facility in the city limits of Fayetteville could have over forty people?
Moving forward, if somebody came in, they wouldn't be able to apply if they were within a half mile for more than thirty from the single family, if they were within five hundred for more than forty. If somebody can do with a GIS mapping system, they can find areas that are outside of that in those two zones, they could apply for more
Okay.
and be in front of you. Then they would have to prove these standards that are there on the SUP, the Keenan standards, that it's really truly not going to harm the community in the area, in fact.
All right. And, and the, the peer comparisons, you only found Wilmington, Greenville, and Greensboro, right? So where the other cities-
And Winston-Salem.
Winston-Salem. Well, the other cities, did that mean the other cities didn't have any, any regulation or criteria that addressed it? Because I'm sure they have homes there.
This process, give me just a second.
Or facilities, rather.
This, this process is one that it happens where the private sector looks to get an award from the Federal Bureau of Prisons for residential reentry centers. So the, the system that's in place now says there's only going to be so many in certain locations around every state. There's not a lot of them. We've just, I've shared what's there. Fayetteville has one now that's over in an area that went through an SUP and has been a quiet item. What you had a few years ago is one that used one of these zones and came in with an application. It's worth noting, it's not within our control. But part of that process of when there's an opportunity to ask for more of these, that the, there has to be at least two local government boards that are notified of what they're asking for, and there's not a guarantee or an automatic on any of it. For example, I know that the, in some of the research that I personally did to look around and find some things, I saw that they had requested thirty beds currently. Not a hundred, thirty. But that doesn't mean that there's not going to be the next and the next for that other one in the past. So your answer to the question, that's what's there in the, in the state.
Thank you. Round two, Councilmember Ingram.
I'm good, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Council, any other questions, comments? All right, you were going to do the motion, or you had a question? Oh, I'm sorry. All right, he had motion beside your name, I'm sorry. Councilmember here?
Thank you, Mayor. No, sir, I had questions. Dr. Newton, thank you for this presentation. This is something we have been working on now for a couple of years. And it's very, very dear to my heart and to members of the district that I represent. I sent you four questions, and I see that you and your team did very good in responding to those questions. I guess they were already somewhat a part of your presentation. But I do have a couple. One, one I want to mention is number four that I sent you concerning the type of security that would be provided for these type facilities. Is that something that's a part of the ordinance? Or is this something a part of, that comes with them filling out the application?
No, yes. So it's not a part of the ordinance, but it would be something that would come in, that they could provide that information. And when you have your quasi judicial hearing, that evidentiary hearing that comes with an SUP, you can ask that information. So-
Is that something that will be applied to the SUP as far as a question?
Let me, let me, let me ask it, answer it the same way, a different way.
Okay.
The SUP process that you currently now have in place because you've switched allows you to hear testimony and evidence. You, you are not the ones who gather all the questions and throw the questions out. You sit in that judicial, quasi judicial thing. The application definitely can have that in there. And, and because this is contract service that's being done through the Federal Bureau of Prison, and they allocate or award the number of beds, I mentioned it just a couple of minutes ago, there are at least two local governments are being asked for input when that happens. So it's not a part of what's necessarily in front of you, not part of this. But from the federal side, there's another opportunity for input. In addition to that, there's a combination of that they have custody levels and security levels. Those are two different terms that are used by the Bureau of Prisons. I am not pretending to know that or be trained in any of that. But that does allow me, at least I can read what others have written on it. What this is not, it's not a prison. It is not in that line of things. In those custody levels, tying to that question that you sent to the city attorney, and she shared with, with me last night, and others, those custody levels that happen are maximum security, in custody, out custody, and community custody. So this, as they had, you'd heard on that one that already is in, said it's the lowest level. They are considered the lowest level. But the idea of security as a word is one that has a federal meaning, a little bit different than you and I generally use. But definitely is part of what has to be, would be addressed if it comes in front of the city council, if somebody asks for a special use permit on it.
Well, then, I would like for, on our applications, whatever the correct wording that could be used that would be in support of security, I would like that to be a part of our application process. Also, as I look and, and, and look at up to the thirty residence section on the proposed items.
Yes, sir.
I would like to see one half mile for both the residential and the multifamily. I would, and if that's, unless there's something that legally we cannot do, instead of it going up to the forty residents with the five hundred feet, I would like to make a suggestion that it be a half a mile with both of those zonings, residential and multifamily, or with the multifamily. Another concern, question that I would like to ask, is if, if you have a piece of property, and in that piece of property, on that piece of property, that vacant piece of property, on the, on the right is residential, behind that property line is residential, and across the street is residential, okay? What do you, I mean, how, how does that work? If we're going to do the half a mile? Okay, if you, if you follow what I'm saying?
I do.
Okay.
Yeah, so I answered in reverse. Well, but the second one, I think, was really you making a statement to the others. For the first one, they'd have to convince in the evidentiary hearing and all the material that they provide, no adverse impact. They, and the standards that you have in place now, no, I have, here's a second. The new standards that you put in place have phrases like, that they have to, they have to demonstrate and prove to you as a board that you're confident that it's in harmony with the area in which it's located. Right off the start, that may be a challenge from that scenario described.
Yeah, but my, and I see what you're saying, I understand the adverse interest. I understand where you're going, and, and you can, can, can continue. But instead of us allowing it to get to that point to come up, up before a board, why, why is it that's something that can be addressed within our ordinance or our policies? That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, I, I think the answer is it already is because you're not going to see community commercial in that scenario, that hypothetical scenario. You're not going to see a mixed use that's going to fit that unless it happens to be a very large acreage and someone's wanting to do five, ten different uses, and all those borders of that. So I think what's there is in place. I'll stop on the other standards that you have. Your, your second question, or the statement about the half mile for multifamily, again, this is within your purview to determine what you want to do. We're giving you the recommendation that came from the planning commission and our review. There's nothing that would indicate to me, we are not a small town in terms of how much land we have, that that would be, create where there's no opportunities. So that's within the council's purview. And then to the first one, adding security as a part of the application, that's an easy thing that can happen administratively, to have that note if somebody comes in and applies for this, that that's something that they have to address on their application. And more importantly, when it comes time to the actual SUP evidentiary hearing, they have to present that and convince you on it.
Okay, my, my last question, my, my last question, I think. When it comes down to the name, and that's been a concern that I've heard from members of, you know, residents, whenever that notification goes out, and I'm so glad that council supported the thousand feet. So whenever that notification goes out, it, how does that notification, I was trying to, you, you had some, you had some information in there, and I'm trying to find it. I think it was in the slide part where you keep going. Right, 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 no, no, that was it, right, right there. Okay, so whenever the notification goes out about this particular, because if the name, if there's a struggle with changing the name, does, is this a part of, of the notification? What I'm reading where it says reentering society while under the constraints and imprisonment and include, is that a part of the notification letter?
The name is, as part of the, there's a, there's been a request for a special use permit. There'll be a evidentiary hearing on this and that date at this location, and it will say it's for a community reintegration center. There's usually a short paragraph that talks about what it is. We also include a QR code for those who like that, where they can come right in and see the actual application.
Yes, sir, that's not what I'm asking you, though.
Okay, I thought it was.
Does, does this, does that include, when the notification goes out, is this a part of the inclusion of the notification when people are reading it? Because I want, my, my concern was, I wanted citizens to be able to read something that comes to their house and it not kind of skate by their- that comes to their house and not kind of skate by their understanding. But if they see certain words, they say, oh, maybe this is something I need to go and speak on. That's the reason I asked that question.
The only part that would be in that would be that name, Community Reintegration Center, which I think gets to your point. Is that enough for somebody to be aware of it?
Well, that's something else that I would like to include. So, Mayor, that's where I am.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin?
Thank you, Mayor. Just for clarity, so moving forward, if there's, for some reason, a increase in number, or they want to increase in number, that would be something that would have to, they would need a special permit, correct?
Let me make sure that I understand what you asked. If somebody comes in and asks for...
Well, filling out the application instead of doing the 30 or 40 because of the distance, it would have to come to us for a special permit?
They wouldn't even get that option. If they found a place outside of those radius, then they could come in with a higher number. If, as a condition, staying with that, you approve one for, say, 20, and they then come back and say, well, we want to make it 30, that also would be back in front of you, if it were approved with a series of conditions.
Okay, well, that turns to my second question. So as far as the distance, and that kind of brings me to with the church being near the strip club or vice versa. If so, if a developer wanted to come in and build homes in that area, will it be the same distance because the halfway house or reintegration center was there first? How would that work?
Great question. That's the very traditional one. I love that rural area, so I moved next to it. Now they put the manure spreader out, can they stop doing that?
Right.
Same question in a different context here. Yes, if that has been approved, it has done all the things that it should. There's a whole bunch of different terms we can use. Let's just use the word, they're vested, they're there. Somebody moves closer, somebody knows that they've moved closer. It doesn't make them no longer non, illegal, nonconforming. They are vested, they're allowed to be there. That's a good, that's a good question.
All right, thank you.
All right, Councilmember McNair, you had a question? Okay. All right, council, we've had adequate discussion. See, no further questions. Councilmember here?
Yes, sir, Mayor. I would like to make a motion to... Let me get back to... My item. I think I need some help with my computer to get it back to... Let's see, here it is. Okay, I think I'm there now. Okay, Mayor, I would like to make a motion that the city council adopt the proposed tax amendments for the Community Reintegration Center along with the following options. That a half mile be for both the residential and the multi-use. And that some form of a change for security being a part of the application. And that in the notification, that the notification also states, yeah, a description of those that are to be a part of this structure as far as inmates, federal inmates, and things along that line. Please, I mean, please help me.
Hold on, hold on a second, Councilmember Ingram. Councilmember here, I'm going to need a little bit more clarity on that motion. It was kind of convoluted. So you're saying the motion to approve?
No, I, no, go ahead, sir.
No, I'm asking, the motion you were making, were you modifying it to include certain things? Can you repeat that?
Right. I would like to make a motion that the city council adopt the proposed tax amendments for the Community Reintegration Center with the following amendments. Is that better?
Uh-huh.
The following amendments is that a half a mile be used both for the residential and the multifamily. And that a form of security be a part of the application. And also that full description of the, a full description of, I'm trying to... I'm trying to think exactly what to call them, but a full description of those that are to fulfill the structure, the inmates, or whatever you want to call them. But a better description so that, and this is where I may need some help with legal or maybe another member, where that when residents read the notifications that go out, they actually know those that are, that are proposed for this particular SUP.
Councilmember here, I do have an interest in second, but I'm going to help with this part.
There's a motion on the floor by Councilmember here, stated, Councilmember Ingram.
Yes, so what Councilmember here is asking is that for the notification, that the description of the Community Reintegration Center be included in the notification, where on page five of 10 in our presentation, you see that there is a description, that he wants that description to be included on the notification. Not anything that we have to come up with, just this description that is listed in our presentation.
What, so is that a second?
That is a second.
All right, so it's motion by Councilmember here. To include those things that he mentioned, I think the modifications are distance. He wanted additional distance for the other, regardless of the size.
And the multifamily.
From residential and from multifamily. I did hear that clarification on the name of whatever it would be called be included in the notification is given to the residents. And there were some other criteria that was mentioned. I couldn't pick it all up. But that's a motion on the floor, seconded by Councilmember Ingram. Discussion phase. I do believe that we need to put some structure around the boundaries of these to make sure that it's a better transition. I think there was a lot of gray area there when the last situation happened, and we were restricted based on what we had at the time. I am a little concerned by some of the additional criteria we're saying about security on the application, some other things that these contractors would have to do for law enforcement purposes, for, to be a federal vendor and to be compliant location. I don't want to, I don't want to make it seem as if we tighten this up so much that where we don't have the ability to have any reintegration. Because we, people will need to be reintegrated in our community. And so I do understand putting boundaries and restrictions, but if I vote in against, I may can't buy into all of the criteria that was just mentioned in the motion. But I do believe that some restriction, additional restriction and clarification are necessary. So, Councilmember Benevente, and then Thompson here and Ingram.
Thank you, Mayor Colvin. I think a more appropriate motion would be, from the three options here, that city council remand this back to staff. Because I think a lot of what Councilmember here was talking about would warrant that, just to be, you know, clear. Even if that were to be the case, I'm in favor of adopting the proposed tax amendments as they stand currently. A lot of the concerns I've heard from the community, a lot of the concerns I feel like Councilmember here and Councilmember Ingram are talking about would be sorted out once they come to our quasi-judicial forum. When they ask about, if your standard for getting a yes vote out of you is that they have high-level security, a lot of guarantees when it comes to property values, impact on those things, then that's what it's going to cost to take your vote. And they'll have to present evidence to convince you otherwise. That is the appropriate way to do this. I think trying to make it so that we can't have these types of reintegration facilities near any type of home defeats the purpose of reintegration. If we're saying they can't be around nobody, no business, no store, we put them out as far away as possible, not much reintegration is happening. So there needs to be some, I understand the concerns. Let that make mean that you're going to be a tough vote to get when it comes that time. But to try and eliminate anybody from even approaching us about this, I think is the wrong direction. Recidivism happens when we do not reintegrate. If we get people coming out of prison and they don't get the support that they need, they're going to end up causing more harm. So if you look at reentry council statistics, they have 90-plus percent of people, 99% of people staying out of prison, making money in this community. And by that I mean tax revenue, as opposed to costing this community money in prison. So reintegration is important. Let's not put so many limits that we end up causing more problems.
Thank you. Councilmember Thompson?
I really want to make a comment, Mr. Mayor. I was concerned about this issue, so I went and talked to one of my friends who went to a halfway house after he got out of prison. First, let me say, that has nothing to do with being next to somebody's home. It has to do with responsibility, it has to do with challenging, it has to do with changing your mind to know that now you have responsibilities because while you were in prison, you didn't have any. I just wanted the clarification of the amendment, because if you went to a half a mile, then I want to know how many residents would we put within that half a mile? Would it just be 30, or would it be 40?
All right, was that a question for staff? Was that a question for staff?
There's a question for Dr. Newton, if he was to change his, make his motion to move to a half a mile for both single and multifamily?
If I heard what has been offered, where I'm showing the cursor, within, from 500, it moves to the half mile, the number that I didn't hear changed would still be 40. So that shows 40, and we change that to the half. I think that's...
Yeah.
He's nodding, that's what I meant.
All right. Councilmember Jensen, and then I'll have here and Ingram second.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just going to say that I had heard that we talking about, you know, bringing it back. I heard kind of that just one time. But what I wanted to say was, I am going to support the motion that Councilmember here did. We have got to make a decision tonight. We have to make a decision tonight, because if we don't, we can find ourselves where we were a year and a half ago. So I cannot support pushing it back and kicking the can down the road. So that's all I need to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember here, and then Ingram.
Yes, sir, Mayor. I still would like to, I still would like to move forward. It's never been about reentering into the community. It's never been about that. It was just trying to put some boundaries there for our residents, for our citizens. These items that I'm bringing, that I've brought tonight, did not directly come from me. They come from citizens that I represent, some in, I mean, from across the city. So we have to, it's not about that. It's always been about how can we also support the community also, those that are coming back into the community. And I've had several family members that have, you know, come out of incarceration, back into the... So that's never been what it's been about. It's about how do we support, you know, the communities also. So I don't have a problem with cleaning it up a little and pulling back the security items since Mr. Dr. Newton says that that will, something that he could take care of. But I would like to still move forward with the ordinance, I mean, with the policy, the motion that I made, but as far as the security item piece of it, I would leave that best of how we were led from Dr. Newton tonight.
Okay, Councilmember Ingram, you had something additional?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I am going to pull a chapter from my, the personal side of me. Growing up in this city, in District 2, I paid a lot of visits to prisons and halfway houses because I have family that were a part of, that went to jail, in prison, and had come out and gone through halfway houses. So last year or the year before, when this missed charities happened, I pulled in those same individuals, and I asked them several questions about, you know, their thoughts on it. And I truly listened to them and what they felt. And also remembering my experience as a visitor, going to, you know, the halfway house, especially the one on Ramsey Street. I've been there plenty of times. And then also going to prison. And I think honestly, I think reintegration is more about how we treat people within the city, not where they go and lay their heads, per se. We want them to be in a comfortable setting, we want them to be in a home. But in terms of geographically locating, you know, whether it's a half mile out, five miles out, I think it's more about how we are interacting with these citizens when they are coming back into the community and the programs that are available for them and the access. So as somebody who has had much experience with individuals, have come through halfway houses, and going to make visits to prisons, I am in full support of this motion, which is why I seconded it. And I would just ask that, you know, if you don't know, or if you have not had these experiences, then maybe have that conversation with people to actually understand what is going on and how they feel about these types of issues. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. All right, Councilmember Mahndros, she had something in the discussion phase, and then Council will bring this home.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To your point, before I can support the motion on the floor, I need to better understand what exactly it's stating.
Thank you. All right. Councilmember here, you wanted to kind of reiterate that motion, then we'll call for the vote. Counsel?
I'm trying to get back to...
So if I heard it correct, there's a motion on the floor to approve, to adopt the ordinance change with the modification that the half a mile restriction that is shown for the 30 residents for a single family also be consistent for the multifamily. I think you withdrew the criteria regarding the security question on the application. And what were the other criteria?
And that the definition...
And the definition be included in notifications that went out.
That it match what is in our docket.
Okay, all right. So that's the motion on the floor, seconded by Councilmember Ingram. We've had discussion, council, I'll look to you for your votes on that motion. All right, iPads have probably gone home for tonight.
Mine is up.
All right. All right, show of hands, those in favor? All right, those oppose? All right, motion carries eight, two. Those voting opposed, Councilmember Mahndros and Benevente. All right, motion to adjourn, counsel?
Happy birthday, City Manager Hewitt.
Oh, my goodness.